Good evening and welcome to a special session of Athens City Council on Tuesday, May 28, 2013. This is an abbreviated agenda from our regular sessions of council. And so we'll just jump right into it to establish a quorum. And we have all members of council with the exception of Kent Butler this evening. So we have six out of seven members present. And we'll move directly into ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 4713, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $250,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the costs of acquiring and constructing improvements to East State Street and declaring an emergency. Member Nysel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 4713.
Second.
And this particular ordinance establishes the issuance of $250,000 worth of notes. And this represents the last probably segment of payoff that we have for our improvements to East State Street. We, as of the renewal date on June 27th, we owe $500,000. We'll be paying $250,000 down and then owe this last $250,000. So these notes are about ready to mature and that's the purpose of issuing the new notes for the city.
Thank you. So we have a motion to adopt and a second. Do we have any questions on this ordinance or discussion? All those in favor of ordinance 4713, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 4913, an ordinance authorizing construction and construction engineering of the Columbus Road-Lancaster Street Infrastructure Improvements Project. Introduced by member Pappy.
So we had a meeting, kind of an open meeting, at, on Columbus Road last week. We had quite a few people attend to see the project and to see the work that's gone into the project thus far with the plans and what's going on. We've been discussing this at prior meetings. Are there any questions? Second.
Do we have a motion on this ordinance?
Do we need to move to?
A motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. It is a third reading.
Second.
Sorry.
And the second, that's okay. This is a large project that we hope will greatly improve that major entryway into the city. Any questions or discussion on the Columbus Road project? All those in favor, signal, yeah, please.
We were just talking here, remember, this is going to cost the city about $1.3 million. We're going to be improving the street, not building new streets, but realigning lanes to allow a bike path from the beginning of Lancaster-Columbus Road down where the laundromat used to be, all the way up, all the way out to the end of the city limits. It might switch from side to side at some point, but, excuse me. Okay. So I just wanted to make that clear for people who weren't familiar with the project. It's a large project, something that our own workers will be undertaking late, probably June, July, and the summer for beginning.
We had in-house engineering and I think that's what President Mayor Sands is referring to. And also wanted to share that that's the issue one, $400,000 grant for this year.
Great. And it will be comprehensive, including sidewalks and stormwater runoff and everything that we can put into it, right?
So people should be prepared if they live in that or own property in that area, if their sidewalk is in need of repair, they will indeed get repaired or have the opportunity to repair themselves and go through that assessment process.
Great. Thank you. All those in favor of ordinance 4913, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 5213, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to purchase materials for the replacement of water lines on Patton, Arden, and portions of Marietta Streets utilizing in-house labor. Introduced by council member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt ordinance 5213.
Second.
This particular ordinance is part of the Public Works Plan to replace major water lines, significant water lines each year. And this will run approximately $75,000 from Water Fund 740. I don't think I had much more to add on this.
I just wanted to emphasize the in-house labor part. With Athens City employees are going to be accomplishing this as well as all the other stuff that they do.
And if I'm correct in reacknowledging that while this project is taking place, it will also include repaving of the streets above. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's confirmed.
Great, thank you. Any questions or discussion before we go? Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 5213, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 5313, an ordinance authorizing street paving and repairs. Introduced by myself. So I will move that we adopt ordinance 5313.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Now, this is our summer paving ordinance. It's quite a big one this year, $375,000. It's a bit larger than average over the past four to six years. So we look to be making, we've got quite a list of streets, I'm not going to read through the entire list, quite a list of streets that are, you'll be noticing rehabilitation occurring this summer, assuming that we pass this. Any questions or discussion on this ordinance? All those in favor of ordinance 5313, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Ordinance 5313 is adopted. Ordinance 5413, an ordinance closing a portion of Court, Union, Washington, and State Streets on Saturday, July 20 to 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, July 21, 2013 for Boogie on the Bricks, a family music and arts festival. Introduced by council member Gosney. I move adoption of ordinance 5413.
Second.
Second.
Now, this ordinance is for an event that many of us look forward to each summer, the annual Boogie on the Bricks Festival that seems to be quite popular and seems to be possibly building each year. Not any major changes this year. Is there anything that I'm not aware of?
It was just going to incorporate the, and it states that the arts component in it this year.
That's right, that's right. There will be the addition of the Arts Fair to this year's event. So, any questions or discussion on ordinance 5413? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. The ordinance passes. And we actually have four more ordinances designed to set up this Boogie on the Bricks Festival. And so we'll read through those now. Ordinance 5513, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title VII, Section 7.05.26b1, City Garage Metered Parking Rates and Regulations, on Saturday, July 20 to 1:00 a.m. Sunday, July 21, 2013 for Boogie on the Bricks, a Family Music and Arts Festival. I move adoption of ordinance 5513. And this is to allow free parking during this event in the city parking garage to, as a little bonus to those that are attending the event or otherwise uptown that evening. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance 5513, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. 5613, an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone during the Boogie on the Bricks Family Music and Arts Festival on Saturday, July 20 to 1:00 a.m. Sunday, July 21, 2013. I move adoption of ordinance 5613. This ordinance is simply a public safety measure to reduce the amount of glass that could potentially be a public safety hazard during this music festival. Any comments? All those in favor of ordinance 5613, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 5713, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, Vending, Peddling, and Soliciting, to allow vending in a designated area on July 20 and 21, 2013 during the Boogie on the Bricks Family Music and Arts Festival. I move adoption of ordinance 5713.
Second.
And this is simply to make sure that the vending that will be occurring during this festival is sanctioned and within city law. All those in favor of ordinance 5713, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ordinance 5713 is adopted. The last one for Boogie on the Bricks, ordinance 5813, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, Unnecessary Noise in the Downtown Area, on July 21, 2013 for Boogie on the Bricks, a Family Music and Arts Festival. I move adoption of ordinance 5813.
Second.
And this ordinance is simply to make sure that everyone is aware that there will be amplified music coming from this event and to exempt it from our city laws to make sure that we're within our, within our legal rights. All those in favor of ordinance 5813, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Ordinance 5813 is adopted. Moving on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 5913, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between Union and Washington on Saturday, August 10, 2013, from noon to midnight for the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser. Introduced by member Patterson. Ordinance 6013, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title VII, Section 7.05.26b1, City Garage Metered Parking Rates and Regulations, on Saturday, August 10, 2013, from 5:00 p.m. to midnight for the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser. Introduced by council member Patterson. Ordinance 6113, an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone during the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser on Saturday, August 10, 2013. Again, introduced by member Patterson. And one last one on Bounty on the Bricks. This is ordinance 6213, an ordinance suspending enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, Vending, Peddling, and Soliciting, to allow vending in a designated area on August 10, 2013 during the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser. Again, introduced by member Patterson. Ordinance 6413, an ordinance amending the 2013 appropriation ordinance, introduced by council member Nysel. Ordinance 6813, an ordinance declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for a municipal purpose. Introduced by member Gosney. Ordinance 6913, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a lease with the First Presbyterian Church of Athens, Inc., of Athens, Ohio, for the rental of in-laws 15 and 17 in the city of Athens and declaring an emergency. Ordinances for first reading. And we have two ordinances up for first reading tonight. The first is ordinance 7013, an ordinance amending the Athens City Code to establish Title 47, Resource Extraction and Waste Disposal Monitoring and Mitigation. Introduced by council member Fall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I presented this a couple of weeks ago in committee and we went over it pretty thoroughly. Once again, this is establishing a new title within the Athens City Code to help to protect the city's citizens, taxpayers, their health, their health and safety of city citizens. And the title is of Resource Extraction and Waste Disposal Monitoring and Mitigation Program for the city of Athens. And we went over it pretty detailed. I think that it covers not only things such as maybe oil or injection wells, but also other types of resource extraction that may occur within the city, the city of Athens. So, and it has such things as requiring certain types of background information about the companies, requiring spill planning and notification, authority for testing of disposal waters by the city, required use of stable benign tracers for disposal sites, public notification, I mean, different types of public hearings and notification, imposition of a monitoring fee, and an establishment of an Athens Monitoring Mitigation Environmental Account.
I was just going to add one thing because elected positions change from time to time that member Fall did include in the establishing of the fee amount, periodic review, so people could keep that in the back of their mind, that council does need to think about that in case expenses change every couple of years.
Yes, expenses go up usually.
Do we have comments from council members on this ordinance?
Just like to thank council member Fall and I know member Pappy and some others have been involved in the background work and the research on this. And I think it's just one more important part, you know, including this in the code. So thank you for helping us get the steps there and Pat Lang for our law director for helping review it.
Yeah, and I would just say briefly, and I'm not going to comment in any great detail on the legislation, other than to say that this is something that I think the city can enforce and something that we can defend, you know, if necessary. And also want to thank member Fall and member Pappy in particular for working within the parameters. You know, we talk a lot in the council here about what we can't do and what the state, you know, prohibits us from being able to engage in certain types of regulation. I think this is a great example of where, you know, we're looking for creative ways that we can continue to safeguard the environment and our water quality here within the city and to do so in a way that is consistent with the state laws that are so often confining us. And so I want to thank you for your leadership on that, sir.
Other comments? I'd just like to add, well stated, but this is a process that has taken a lot of time and a lot of work and effort by several people. And it's, you know, one of our primary functions is to protect the public health and safety. And I think this goes a long way to ensuring that we're doing everything we can to do that. So hopefully this will, this will be a success and possibly something that if it's successful here, something others can look to, or other communities to model. Moving on to ordinance 7113, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency for a community development block grant for fiscal year 2014, federal fiscal year 2013, and declaring an emergency. Member Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is this something that we need to suspend the rules on? I know there's an emergency clause.
June 21 is dead state is the deadline. We have, we're okay. Council clerk is telling us.
Thank you. This is the, again, the community development block grant, one that we apply to annually and have been very successful at getting this. This particular project would be to improve a home that the city owns, which is at 458 Richland Avenue. The grant itself would be, in, the total price on the project, if approved or granted, would be $86,490, which would be essentially a complete home improvement, both exterior and interior, to include a lot of the appliances, window replacements, vinyl siding. It'll have an accessible roof and roof covering, new entry doors, a whole laundry list of items. And it sounds like it's like pretty much a complete rehab of this particular home. Again, this will fall under emergency clause in order to get it through by the June 21st.
The original plans as envisioned for this property, it has a single car garage, attached single car garage, and it was going to be redeveloped into a livable space, but that's been taken out of the budget to make it affordable really, within the grant confines. So that's about $12,000 coming out of that entire budget. But otherwise, it's a great project. It's a, it's a house that we bought when we put the fire station down there and it's been empty for a long time. And it's been suggested for years and years that this, that something be done and it be made available for low-cost housing in our city. So I'm happy to say to the mayor when he comes back, thank you for doing this.
Great, thank you. Any questions on this ordinance or comments?
No.
We did tour this a couple of years ago on the streets, so I'm not sure if it was part of this past year, but it looks like it could be a nice home for a family. One thing, it is next to the fire station and it is low-income housing, so if this plan does incorporate any energy efficiency or insulating type of renovation work, that might be, might be something that would make the family happy.
A little soundproofing is what you're suggesting.
Double pane windows or something of that nature, I don't know.
They do have new windows.
But I'm sure that if we are successful, I'm sure that this will be a nice, nice home for whoever is able to live in it. So that is the last item on our abbreviated special session agenda this evening. So we will adjourn our special session and immediately move into our committee meetings. The first committee meeting tonight is Planning and Development. Chairwoman Fall.
Thank you. My first agenda item is an update on the sewer agreement with the county. Chris Nysel and I, along with members of the city administration, have been meeting with the county and their consultant about the extension of sewer in the Radford Road area. We've never quite come up with a really good acronym for this project. So, as you know, when that was first brought to council, a long time ago, Larry Payne brought it, I was probably the most skeptical on council about this whole thing because I think that there, the city has some benefit that can occur from this particular project, but there were also potential costs. And so we've spent a lot of time in these meetings over the months hashing these out. And I probably have been the most critical of this whole process. I am probably known as, you know, Eeyore on the committee. So I think that we kind of had a breakthrough and so I want to kind of give a brief update onto this. And I guess the thing is, is that we've come to a point of saying, yes, let's look at the potential defining of our agreement. And now the city is working with a consultant to put what we demand into kind of legal contract language. I think the four key concerns that were probably foremost in the whole process, at one point, you know, that it was talked about, oh, phase two and phase three and we're, and that's not part of the pro, it's only one area. The area that is there that's developed, that has septic systems, because the core goal of this whole process is for, to mitigate for environmental impacts that these septic systems are currently causing for Margaret Creek, which also goes into the Hawking. So we want to mitigate for that. And that was the primary goal for all, for our discussions. There was concern stated by Paul Logue and myself about flight of businesses, potentially we can develop a really nice area that's all of a sudden out of the city limits for businesses. So we've come up with several ways to mitigate that. The biggest one is that land uses are kind of set in stone for right now, what's there is there. And if there's radical land use change, that it will trigger things in the contract that says that we can look at certain things such as CEDAs, which is a type of planning vehicle, type of program, or JEDs that help to mitigate for changes. And we're looking specifically at increase in commercial and business from maybe residential to answer that flight, that business flight concern. So I think that was probably one of the biggest breakthroughs, I think, because we discussed that there's no way that this area is going to be zoned. That's not going to happen out in the county. And from our point one is that we have discussed the fact that we cannot annex this area. A lot of other towns do that, but that would be a drain on the city's resources of fire and safety resources and, for not very much economic benefit, to tell you the truth. However, it is still open to annex certain pieces that would make sense to kind of make it so that our city boundaries make more, are more cohesive and don't look like gerrymandered, you know, districts in Texas. So right now, those were the concerns and I think that we've worked out pretty much with the county that we can look at this. We've looked at the maps and agreed on the maps and the number of hookups and things like that. So now it's more of the nitty-gritty of putting it into contract. Chris, do you have something?
Just a comment that I think there was good discussion and thank you for asking the questions that you did, because it's better to ask those questions upfront about, you know, the city and infrastructure concerns and development. So this would, if it all goes through, would add approximately 1,500 units, hook them up to our city water, our sewer system. And I think, if I'm remembering correctly from some of the original information presented by the Health Department, they regard this as the single most important thing we could do for improving health kinds of circumstances for our city-county residents. So I'm really happy to see that move forward. I think that, from what little I know about the EPA, I think they would also be happy to know that we're working together, the city and county are working together for a structure, for a unit that might have some cost savings as opposed to building their own standalone sewer unit. So that would be my comments. Paula, do you want to?
I just, I wasn't clear about these, about the annexation portion. Did I hear that we would never be able to annex that?
We just are removing annexation from this actual agreement, memorandum of agreement that we're drafting. It essentially remains silent because that will still be something that they will come petition, they'll petition to leave the county. I mean, the process remains the same. What it really is, as council members have indicated, is we've agreed in principle to the 1,500 existing single-family home users. So the existing uses and being able to provide the treatment for that. Once again, the county will build the infrastructure and maintain the infrastructure out there. It's just from when it comes into the city and then onto our plant. It becomes a little bit more of a timely this issue if we are, we're looking at the Richland Avenue design for the south of the roundabout. And it may require, we're looking at the sewer sizing and seeing what we have in terms of I and I. It would make sense to know what we're going to be collecting in advance based on what we want to do there in the streets.
Right.
I think that the citizens out in the county are always concerned with the annexation. And that's because we do not have enough police and fire to cover that large of a geographic area, so, nor would they necessarily want to be annexed into the city. So, you know, I think the annexation is moot in this whole discussion. Andy Stone did a lot of number crunching and so I appreciate what he did. And, you know, I think that it makes sense because in process of doing these sort of upgrades and the city will be able to do some needed repair work too in certain areas. And so that's a plus for us. And we made it pretty clear to the county that it's their cell, that they're responsible for all the public hearings and meetings and discussions that they have to have in order to get buy-in from the county residents. And, you know, that's, it's their baby, so. Kathy?
I just wanted to say I appreciate your consideration regarding businesses moving out because that, that also has an impact on the city if that were to be the case. So, thank you.
Just, I'm sorry.
You go first.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to... Yeah, I just wanted to take a comment that Member Fall just made about our sewage system. As we all know, as we in council at least know, it's undergoing an almost $20 million expansion. And that expansion will allow for that increase in septicage coming from these other areas. So, it's not going to be overwhelming our, our system at all.
Right. And the 20, the sewer upgrade that we are doing, you know, that we have passed numerous ordinances about, will go forward whether or not this, this agreement goes forward. So, that is for the benefit of the citizens of Athens. And it's not because we can potentially, you know, get sewer from someplace else. That's, that's, and that's key, you know, we're not spending $20 million so we can take sewer from somebody's house.
Right. And I know that Chris Nysen remembers that during the whole planning process, we want to allow for what we do is moderate growth. And this fits in with it along with a whole build-out of the University of States and other parcels that are out there.
Thanks, just a quick question for clarification. So, will we see the memorandum collectively together that will be part of, that we would be voting on as a council? Is that correct then, or is that something that the executive branch is just?
Because we have to accept it as a council.
Okay. That was, that was my understanding.
Yeah. And you'll be seeing it sooner than later. This kind of.
So, there's a specific limit? Within the memorandum, there's a specific limitation to the enhancement of business development along that corridor, or is that what I'm hearing or understanding is that?
That the businesses there will be tied in, but there won't be, you know, if somebody out there wants to have a new parcel that's not currently developed or it currently has a septic system, will not be able to tie into. Like, somebody out there wants to build bathrooms for some festival place, they're not going to be able to, that's not part of this agreement. So, you know, that, so it's just, and if there's, you know, radical land use changes, say somebody went in and, and wanted to subdivide an area and put in, you know, that's now a house and put in, you know, a lot more septic or tie-in, sewer tie-ins, then that's something that would be triggered. There's going to be language in that contract to trigger looking at that closer. So, you don't get, you know, man camps and stuff developing out there. We're trying to, to be balanced of regulation and allowing for private property uses with trying to protect the interests of the city. So, it's like this balancing.
So, Member Fall, so who will be monitoring that?
That will be within, that's within the contractual.
Correct. There's a, we'll place that language in there for future permitting. We, our attorneys that we engage, we are in no illegal obligation under the Ohio EPA to take on any more than what we agreed to here and now.
And the, the county will be responsible for all the billing and dealing with people who don't pay the bills and they have similar systems like in the Plains and things where they, they kind of have done this similar sort of thing before, so.
We sell water to the Plains and it's one fee and then they go ahead and.
So, they have mechanisms already figured out for that, so.
Thank you. I completely agree that the, the public health aspect to this is, is a major selling point that can't be overlooked. As I mentioned when we first discussed this though, I still have reservations about opening this area up to what could be development that may not be well planned or well regulated. And I'm curious to know, you seem to be, since you've been part of all this, you're saying that there will be protections in place in the memorandum. What are the teeth in the protections? Who enforces it? What's the, what's the mechanism by which we'll be kept to these roughly 1,500 residential units within municipal businesses?
Well, that they would not be able to, I mean, the county, which would be the ultimate authority about hooking into the system, and they will not have any permits. They will have a set 1,500 permits. And that if they, you know, that it will in, in order to get any more permits or to go outside of the lines that the map has, would require a whole nother process. So, it's not like it's a open, I guess it's not an open spigot, but, you know, they, and they're responsible for that, you know. But if we find that they're not being responsible, I guess we could just turn off the, you know, we'd put a plug in it. But, I mean, that's the contractual.
I guess I would say there are a couple of controls.
Yeah, and it would go probably, we have a tap fee and an application process in the city and much like that, somebody can't just tap in unknowingly. So, that would be the mechanism is that there would, I'm sure would be a county tap application kind of process and review of that.
I guess I'm not worried about sort of guerrilla tapping into the, like, you know, I'm not worried about illegal tapping into the system, but if we build it, potential is there for, potential is there, I'm not sure that it would happen this way, if the right controls are in place, it won't, but the potential is there that, say there's a different administration or different people that are on the county commission, is there, is there a hard line somewhere legally that the city has where we're protected from?
Yeah, I mean, we, we will have 1,500, they will be able to have 1,500 permits. They have a set amount of sewage that they get to put in. So, if even, I mean, if you have a different administration that decides that they want more sewage, they can negotiate a new contract. But under this contract, it's set. I mean, and that was one of the big things, the whole discussion about Phase Two and Phase Three went out the door pretty quickly. So, it's looking at mitigating the environmental impact. And there are pieces of property out there that could potentially, you know, have development. They're not, you know, they can go and talk to the, you know, county commissioners till they're blue in the face, but they're not getting it because it's not part of the established use of that day, so.
Does council, would Athens City Council have to vote on changes to that memorandum? Changes to the number of taps or the type of taps?
Well, we can look at putting language in there as such. I do want to share with you that Planner Paul Logue had the same as did Member Chris Fall, creating this ripe economic development zone. If we remove, as you stated, the, the future phases and just agree to the existing uses as they are now, we're under no legal obligation to expand that and, you know, the EPA can't regulate it. It's actually becomes the reverse. If someone may want to put in a package plant, which has already occurred and it's, the proximity is so close to the city, they were unable to do that, annexing and tying in, so.
Right. Because they would not be able to give an EPA permit to get, put in a package plant if there is sewer available, but we're not obligated to give them sewer. So, they, you know, they might want to be annexed into the city and then they would be under our regulations and our zoning and then they could have sewer. So, I mean, the thing is, I think it does protect the city in that way. I think that given that they'll, there won't be zoning out there, this is the way that we can regulate land use to a, a degree, so.
So, I'm curious then, is there some room for some economic development along that corridor? Is that correct then, in understanding, or not at this moment? Is that what is being said?
No, I would say that there is a bit, that the, the majority of the 1,300, whatever, 67 existing are single-family households. But if you're talking about expansion or new business coming in, that's, that's, if they're outside our blue areas, we like to say it, the pink, that's a whole new endeavor in terms of negotiating an agreement. We are only speaking, speaking to the existing usages, so. There are, for example, there are a trailer park in this area, maybe two at least. And again, you talk about environmental hazards, the EPA is aware of this corridor and have been looking at it for a period of time. We're going to assist? Well, these are proprietary funds, so when people say, oh, the city's going to make a profit, well, we cannot take that money and, and use it for anything other than for the sewer system, you know, sewer storm sewer system, so. That will just go to the improvements.
And I also think we'll put language in to be, that we as a city entity could put in these planning processes, these, the CEDAs and JEDs, they're kind of like TIFs. They're a way of looking at, and we do a TIF on East State Street, tax incremental financing. So, it would be, you know, if all of a sudden there's this boom, that we would reserve the right to be able to look at that and do extra planning processes out there, so, which would help mitigate any, I think, business flight.
Member Fall, you kept mentioning zoning and I, I don't know that people may understand that we zone inside the city.
Right.
But you might want to explain that a little bit.
The zone, zoning has to be, in order for the county to be zoned, to have zoning, it would have to be voted in by people, the, the citizens of, of the county, or you can do a township-wide zoning. This does cover one township, but includes a little bit of another, so you would be looking at zoning of two townships. But zoning is the four-letter word, zoning, in the county. There is no way in this political time that people in the county would vote for zoning. So, that's not a planning tool that we can use. And so, we develop these other processes, I think, to, to get around that.
What would trigger those other planning processes?
Well, we have to.
Is there a cutoff, or would it just be if there's a general feeling that it's going one direction or another?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Sorry. What would trigger these?
What would trigger the JEDs or the CEDAs?
Other types of planning tools that we might be able to use?
We were going to write into the memorandum, yeah. Paula, no restrictions for this in the future, but he's.
I'll try to answer a few of those questions.
Thank you.
I apologize, I don't have my notebook with me this evening. I wasn't expecting to discuss this issue, I didn't even know it was on the agenda. I probably should have been better prepared, so I apologize. JEDs and CEDAs are, JED is a Joint Economic Development Agreement, I believe is what that stands for. I can't remember what the last D is, it's J E D D. CEDA is a Cooperative Economic Development Agreement. They are typical, Ohio Revised Code has built these instruments into state law since the late 90s or the late 80s to address this very situation. You might have a city such as Athens, now that, and notice both of those terms, JED and CEDA have the word development in there. This, what we've been talking about with the county isn't new development, so that's why we don't get into a JED or a CEDA at this stage. If somebody wanted to develop something in this district, they can't just tap right in. They would have to, what the city has the authority to do in this situation is require that they get in to, to sign up with us for either a JED or a CEDA. One of the reasons the city might do that, they don't have land, they want to see development, they're offering infrastructure, the, the area doesn't want to be annexed, the city doesn't want to annex, there's, like we just said, there's really no benefit to the city of Athens annexing 1,300 single-family residences. That's a lot of police calls, a lot of fire calls, a lot of streets we'd have to pave without major taxes coming in from, from new business. Our concern might be that we've created a ripe economic development zone potentially and we might see businesses within the city of Athens saying, jeez, if I jump over here, I don't have to follow the city zoning regulations and I don't have to worry about paying city income taxes. You can build things like that, payments in lieu of taxes as part of the requirement, pilots, I think those are typically called, so that we're not making an attractive zone that's being in competition with the city. Just like Councilwoman Fall said, we didn't want to create something where we're going to shoot ourselves in the foot, see companies or businesses leaving the city of Athens to develop outside of our city limits and then, you know, jeopardizing our tax base. So, that's why we might get into a situation like that. Because the city is the treating authority and because we're agreeing to go into this in the first place, we have a lot of authority as to how any of that takes place. Nothing new could be built or could be tapped in without our permission. So, at that point, we can jump in and say, okay, well, this, you know, there's a negotiated process at that point to alleviate some of those concerns. We could require that they provide us with detailed planning documents, road upgrades, anything that might be needed to address those issues, as well as payments in lieu of taxes. That would be, in my mind, one of the bigger things we would have to be addressing there. Does that answer that question? Or anything additional on that? Another thing we haven't mentioned yet is this entire zone is within the city's three-mile subdivision regulations. So, we can't, you know, anything new that's, any new, we'll have to go through the city's planning commission. Any variances from the city's subdivision regulations are awarded by Athens City Council. So, if there's a variance needed from our standard regulations, they do have to come before this body to even get an approval for, to split land up, so.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions?
I have one. I know you addressed it and I was glad to hear something being said about the, with the new renovation, the improvement at the wastewater treatment plant and increasing the amount of the influent, the flow that can come into the plant. I'm just curious, because I know now with the old plant or the existing plant, that often during storms or whatnot, we oftentimes will hit max load coming in or, or different period times during the year, that can happen. I'm just curious if someone can give me a sense as to what, with the new improvement and the increased capacity that plant will have or wastewater treatment plant will have, as to with the addition of 1,500 homes plus and businesses, will we have a nice buffer to where we're not bumping up against max load coming into the wastewater treatment plants?
I think that there's two things that will help the wastewater treatment plant, the storm sewer, the storm system process that we are going, because what happens when storms is that it's not getting, it's not increasing because a lot more people are flushing their toilets, it's because of all that infiltration. And this, the, the increase in, in the maximum amount of intake that we can take in, you know, Andy's done a lot of calculation and he is very comfortable with having this, this amount come in and that we still have enough for, you know, a 20-year gross model that he's developed for this. So, I don't think that there's any issue with that. I mean, it's, it's relatively small amount of, when you look at the whole city, so.
Good, thank you. Yeah, that was, you know, I'm always thinking, thinking that, you know, Ohio University may increase enrollments or whatever. So, that population could grow as well, therefore it's going to influence what flow will look like in the future, but.
Well, and University of States, but that's all been, that's been plugged into our projects, the projections for the, the models that he used for the sewer upgrades that we're doing now, so.
And I think that's an important point because people probably don't know that we really are looking at storm water runoff and the effect that that's had into the sanitary sewer. And that's an area that's really in terms of infrastructure improvement, has been slowly being upgraded over the last so many years, that that's.
It's a new line item on your utility bill.
Yeah.
And that will help a huge amount. That will provide a massive, you know, upgrade right there, so. Okay? Any other questions? Okay. So, we're working on this and as I said, we'll probably see it sooner than later, so. Do you have a timeline?
I do not. Sooner than later is what they want, but.
Right. They wanted it yesterday, so.
We meet next week.
Okay. Next on my agenda is the Essence of Athens Project and we have Paul Logue, our city planner, to describe it for us. Thank you. You're on.
Good evening again, Paul Logue, city planner for the city of Athens. Yeah, I wanted to just come this evening and briefly talk with council about a new planning process that I've been working on, that we're getting started with a kickoff event this Thursday evening, 6:00 PM at the Athens Community Center. We're calling it the Essence of Athens Project.
We're calling it the Essence of Athens Project, and I hope that the smell of failing septic systems in Athens Township is not the essence of Athens. Like I would imagine, there's a lot of people, if you tell them on a hot, humid day, that's certainly the essence that they get. I've been working with a faculty member at Ohio State, he's a planner in their city and regional planning program. His name's Kyle Lezel. He is a very active urban planner, he's been working on plans for about 25 years, he's a native of a small town in Tennessee. Kyle Lezel approached me about, about five weeks ago, maybe six weeks ago, about an idea he's had in his mind for a long time, that he's been trying to formulate, and he thinks he just got to the point where he's ready to start working on it. His concept lined up very well with a few things that I'd been trying to articulate working with our municipal arts commission, but hadn't really articulated very well. And so through a few meetings with Kyle, we kind of rallied around, or circled around an idea that were both kind of floating around. Kyle approached the city of Athens first, he wanted to use Athens as a test place. He grew up in the south, and he had an aunt when he was growing up who was on the faculty at Ohio University. And so when he was a 12-year-old, a teenager back in the early 80s or mid-80s, he would generally come to Athens from Tennessee for about a week every summer, and he had the run of this town. And he loved it, loved riding around, loved exploring, the same things we all love about this town. So he always had an affinity or an affection for Athens growing up. He later ended up in a faculty position at Ohio State, and he approached me again to try to work on this, he thought Athens would be the type of community that would be interested in doing this. What we want to do is discover through a very public process what everybody in Athens or who loves Athens thinks makes Athens a unique place, or a wonderful place, or a great place. Not the stuff we like about Athens, there's a lot of things that we like about Athens that we might find in 100 or 1,000 different communities around the state of Ohio, or around the US, or anywhere else. What we're really trying to get down to that core of what we think makes Athens Athens. Probably not an easy question to answer, but I would imagine if we all start talking about it enough, we're going to find a series of themes that, when you layer them together, equals Athens. Once we've gone through this process, and we're going to encourage people to take photographs, use Facebook, email lists to us, email us ideas, you can put things on Twitter, and Facebook, or Instagram, all of those types of things. We want to take all of those elements that are given to us, we'll work with an ad hoc committee to try to find those common threads of what we think makes Athens Athens. From that point, we're going to try to do a series of design recommendations and concepts of ways we can take those unique elements of the city, or of what makes Athens Athens, and reinforce them back into our city. So we have things that will be put back into our built environment, so when you see it, you know you're in Athens. We have a lot of things that you see around Athens that you might think are nice. Bike racks are an easy example. Same bike rack you see in Athens, you can see in 1,000 different cities in Ohio. The same trash cans you see on Court Street, you can see in almost every TV show or movie ever filmed, because everybody uses things out of a catalog. So what we want to do is rather than use things out of a catalog to make Athens a better place, we want to come up with our own ideas of things that we can do in Athens to reinforce what's already special about us. If you think about the things that people, when they come to Athens, that they want to get their picture in front of, how can we get more of those things that people want to stand in front of, have somebody take their picture, so this is Athens, Ohio. They don't want to get their picture taken in front of the same thing they can get their picture taken in front of everywhere else in the world. So we need to try to discover some of those things, you know, what are those picture-taking opportunities that we already have? Those should lead us to what that essence of Athens is. It's tough to describe upfront, we've never done this before. Kyle Lezel's been doing this for years, and he's never done this before, so we're kind of going through an experimental project here. I think what we're going to have, when all is said and done, is a really fun, interesting, and solid package of recommendations to give to council, to give to the mayor and service safety director, and our public works director, of things we can do to just make Athens the best Athens we can get. So, with all that being said, I would love for city council, if they have the time this Thursday to come to this meeting, if they don't have time, I understand. It's not, we're not expecting information to really come out of this meeting, this is just going to be the jump off for the project, we're going to be taking information for about two and a half weeks. It's things you can do in a couple hours, it's things you can do when you're riding your bike, something you can do without even realizing it, if you're just walking down Court Street, you might just take out your cellphone, if you've got a smartphone, snap that picture, email it to us, put it on Twitter, using our hashtag, #essenceofathens, and then we have that information. So it's not a very difficult process, we've tried to decentralize it as best we could to give people several different avenues to submit information to us, and to make it fun and interesting, and then also, just in the process of doing this, encourage people to get out and discover the community again. With that being said, I won't keep you guys too much longer, we have a busy agenda, but if anybody has any questions or anything for me, I'd be happy to answer.
I'd like to make a suggestion, that we, that if you could make a, like, one paragraph blurb, you know, blurb about it, and then we put it on the website?
It's up.
They got it today.
Okay. With all the hashtags and everything, so.
Talk about it now, it's Thursday, Thursday night, Thursday evening, tell us-
Thursday evening, 6:00 PM at the Athens Community Center, I believe it's rooms B and C, or rooms A and B. Kyle Lezel will be present, he'll be probably, he'll probably give about a half hour, 45-minute presentation to really, try to get people to wrap their heads around the idea. It is hard to describe without a 25-minute slideshow for you guys, and all that stuff. I know, I respect everybody's time here, so I didn't want to get into that this evening. But I think if you can make it to that meeting, I know our government channel will be recording it as well, for those who can't make it, and then we're going to be doing a lot of follow-up through internet, Twitter, Facebook, and all that fun stuff.
I was just going to add that, as you were talking, I was thinking about all the different cities and places I've traveled, and what, you know, I was just throwing out in my own brain, you know, Barcelona, Spain, or wherever it is, you know, and what made me think, what was it that just, you know, the first adjective or describer thing that came to my mind, and I think that's what you're asking for. You know, what, what do we think about that, and then you'll pull all those different ones together, and this is exciting.
And I think along that point, Councilwoman Fabby, you know, when we travel, at least, I get a lot of, because of my position, when somebody goes somewhere really interesting, a lot of times I'll get an email from somebody and say, hey, I just went to Oslo, Norway, and I saw this thing there that we need to have in Athens. And, but, it's a great idea, but do we want Athens, Ohio to look like Oslo? What we want is, somebody from Oslo who ends up in Athens, Ohio, goes back to Oslo and says, I saw this thing in Athens, Ohio that I've never seen before. We need to do that in Oslo. And so when they do it in Oslo, then they're copying from us, and we're not copying from those communities. So that's part of it, is that, that concern about that we get into this, you know, it's easy to just copy from everybody, you can cut and paste offline, you know, online, Ctrl-C, Ctrl-V, and you're done. You can copy ideas, you can, you can copy people's building plans, you can copy their subdivision regulations or zoning codes, you can copy pretty much everything if you want to, all you've got to do is take a few pictures and hire somebody to do it. So what we're trying to do is just the opposite, is rather than copy from people to make Athens a better place, or a nicer place, we want to find out what we can do as a city to make us more unique, so that we're copying less and creating more.
You know that Viscom program they do every year, you know, the Soul of Athens? That's really, you know, in terms of an idea and a concept, is really an awesome kind of thing to think about when you talk about the essence of Athens.
Exactly, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to echo these similar sentiments, in that meetings that I've participated in, attended with the Athens Municipal Arts Commission, which our planning director has been as well, there's a lot of excitement generated there with these ideas and conceptualizing the future of Athens within this arena. And when you think of places like Chicago and the big giant reflecting beam that the artist Anish Kapoor has created, we don't need to imitate that piece of artwork, but there are elements here that we embrace, and trying to find and determine what that is, and then continue to embrace it at a bigger scale.
Exactly. Exactly, right. And I don't think this is, this isn't really intended to be an art project-
Right.
But it, clearly it lends itself to being very artistic, and it's a creative process. So I don't think we're just going to get a million murals out of it, but you might end up seeing some of that come from this as well.
Culturally, how do we conceptualize Athens, and how can we-
Precisely, yeah.
Just real quick, a comment, or anything else, and I, too, am really excited about this, and intrigued by this. It's interesting, you know, from a psychological standpoint, first impressions happen within milliseconds, so it'll be interesting, and in my mind, that's an essence. It'll be interesting to see what comes out of this, especially with people's initial impressions.
Right.
I can't speak for others, but I know that, you know, I remember rolling into Athens way back when, and I didn't have to even go through the interview process, I'm like, this, this is where I want to be. But it'll be interesting to see what comes out of this, in terms of images, impressions.
Right. I agree, yeah.
Very intriguing.
I think our biggest concern is that we don't get enough, a lot of people that actually provide us and contribute to the project. If that doesn't happen, that'll be, you know, that'll be a challenge to work through, but if we get, you know, dozens, or 100 or more people to get involved with it, which I think we're going to get, I think we're going to have a really fun, interesting project, and I think it's, ultimately, it's going to be the fun part of what we, what we can do as a city.
Other questions? See, planning can be fun and exciting. It's not always CEDAs and JEDs.
Steve's working on sewers.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Okay. Now, going back to the kind of the mundane and boring, next week I will bring forward a revocable license for a city right-ofway, right-ofways, and this is an interesting, not super common. It's for an existing fence on Ohio Avenue, I think it's 22 Ohio Avenue, the fence is there, so it's a, it's a different type of right-ofway, because when the people sold their house, the people who bought the new, the new owners of the house have to get the, put the, like, the revocable license in their name, and that's because it's a, as it's termed, a personal, personal in nature, so it's now that all these interesting right-ofways. Any questions about the right-ofway on Ohio? And one miscellaneous I have, since we're talking about right-ofways, and we've spent a lot of time talking about right-ofways, I will be looking at changing, amending the right-ofway language in the code, so I would appreciate information, like Chris Nysley, I know that you got some information from other cities, forward it to me, issues and concerns about the different right-ofways, it's not only architectural features, but as Paul Logue and I have talked about, you know, we have to think about our right-ofways going from heaven to hell. So we need to think about all of that, and how we want to change the language so we-
Purgatory?
Purgatory. So, planning purgatory, so we can get out in front on these sort of issues instead of reacting. Anything else, Michelle?
No.
So please forward those, and I'll be working on that, it's not an emergency or anything.
I would-
You want to talk about right-ofways?
No, I was, I applaud, I applaud the direction in addressing this, because we encounter issues occasionally that we end up spending a lot of time bantering over, and it'll be helpful to have some direction to give to the people in the community who are planning and developing.
Planning and developing. Anybody else, questions? Okay. If anybody else has miscellaneous, I'll be collecting those. Just send them to me, don't send them to the whole list, because we got in trouble for a minute. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the finance and personnel committees.
Okay. Thank you. We have a few items to review tonight, the first one being staffing, and we will be having a request for a change to the city staffing ordinance, and as you know, we have a soft hiring freeze, so when vacancies or changes do come through, they need to come through council. This particular one is to authorize a second position with a sunset clause for the water treatment plant. Our director of our plant is retiring in August, so we're requesting a second position for one and a half months so that the person can cross-train, which makes a lot of sense, and it's something that we've seen crack bringing that through. Next item is for the Athens Police Department and their service weapons. The city police department has provided a list, I know that it was reviewed with the auditor and finance and personnel committee members at a meeting last week, and these are weapons to trade in with a federally licensed firearms dealer. By doing it with that federally licensed dealer, that guarantees that every sales transaction they perform is required to include a federal background check, to include, to ensure they're not selling to a person who's not legally allowed to own a firearm. So what we're doing is trading in some very outdated, in fact, in some cases, from the inventory, I think there were even some broken guns, and trading those in, and then they, the police department would be purchasing some new firearms, and the total of the new firearms cost is $18,148. We're estimated to get a trade-in of $10,160, and we'd be trading in 27 pistols and seven shotguns, and that would mean that we would need to move an appropriation forward for the difference between the cost of the new weapons less the trade-in value, so it's about $7,988.
I have just a quick question, and it seems like you answered it already. This does not involve any high-capacity type of weapons, or-
These are-
They're sidearm-
It does not. This is mostly their service firearm, a lot of Glocks, and then the shotguns, primarily the firearms that are listed, Ralston's, Kossberg's.
Next item is the roof repairs to the fire department, this is for the headquarters, and this is an update at this point. We have received a bid from, or an estimate, excuse me, of the costs that might be involved for repairing it, and from B and B Roofing, but as I understand it, we'll also be getting a review when the consultants come through to look at the municipal garage, is that correct?
And they did, they came in to look at the parking garage, they're scheduling to come back. I'm unwilling to go for it until I do have an architectural, an architect kind of overview, because when we, we're probably, we could be talking $30,000 to $40,000 based on this original estimate, we want to make sure that we're getting something that'll last a good 20-year lifetime at minimum, so.
And we'd had some structural repairs done a few years at the headquarters-
We did.
We'd have roof repairs done at the Richland Avenue, it's just, it's an ongoing, and as you can say, we've got the, we have had the consultants come in for the municipal garage, so just taking care of our buildings, doesn't say.
More to come. I mean, we have capital funds, but they're limited, the auditors looking at that very closely.
Okay, thanks. Yes, number 12.
Maybe I missed it, this is the main station?
Yes, headquarters.
And the structural repairs we did a few years ago, those have held up and been-
They have, and the, and the new ladder truck fits right in and right out, and it's-
Great.
Okay. The next item is for improvements to Arts West, and we'll be needing to appropriate approximately $15,000, and this would be for the purchase of 170 performance seats, and that would be $9,000, and then- And then estimates for removing the carpet, sanding, and refinishing the hardwood floors in the performance space, that would be two thousand dollars. Three thousand dollars to install a removable drape and pipe for the stage. And then other improvements to the performance space, including track lighting for artwork, wall fixtures for hanging temporary artwork pieces, framing materials to seal in the window insulation, and creating appropriate spaces for artwork. That last one would be about a thousand dollars. So some, as we've seen, you know, Arts West is used for a variety of venues, you know, performances and public forums and concerts. And so it's very well, seems to be very well-used city structure, and so we're just doing some improvements to it. Yes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, I was just going to add, along those lines, right, it's very challenging to transform a space that's a performing space into a space that's also an artistic wall gallery space. And so I think some of these subtle enhancements will allow that to be feasible.
It will help, yeah. Yes, Mayor Sands.
Did we find homes for the pews?
I know there was interest expressed in the pews for some of them as a donation to the county courthouse, is that correct?
That is correct. I do not know that they've started to sell bid or what have you, the remaining pews.
There are some.
Oh, yes, that are available.
So we'll be, continue to be updated if we manage to sell some of them, and, okay. We'll be having a request come through. We have a request. This is from Parks and Recreation Department for truck repair. And the information from our mechanic, this is for a 1994 Chevy dump truck. And the crank bearings are worn and not holding the crank true for proper start operation. It also has a blown head gasket and a bad injection pump.
Great, all that, and they still think it merits repair.
They still think it can be, and all of this, we will get all of this for a new complete engine from Jasper with an injector pump and a turbo, would be six thousand, eight hundred, twenty-five dollars. And a fourteen-hundred-dollar core, explain that to me again.
Steve knows it then.
It's just the exchange, so they'll take, they'll take the existing block and repurpose it if possible, reuse it if possible.
Parks and Rec are not as hard on their dump truck as, you know, it doesn't carry salt, it's not, you know, abused, as it were, in terms of that. And they really do feel that we could get a minimum of ten years, if not longer, out of the way they used once that vehicle, because we questioned it, that's an old vehicle. But it would be a major capital purchase, and they feel that it merits this, you know, gentle carrying.
Well, thanks to the mechanics from all of us for taking care of these things, because it does, it services a lot of the park places, and we really appreciate them taking a careful look at it and trying to reuse it. That's, that's great. The next two items are kind of a combination of finance and transportation, the first one being the safe routes to school. And we'll be seeking an appropriation out of account 220 for our fourth year of this grant program. Once again, in the usual fashion, I think we're kind of customizing this around the Second Street and Lancaster areas where we can make improvements to the sidewalks and kind of coordinating that then with our Columbus-Lancaster Road, other improvements to sewer and curb and water lines, so. Andy Stone and Jessica Adine were updating Councilmember Pappy and myself about this project.
And it continues to be a successful grant opportunity for us, and we've seen some really improved walking spaces for, you know, sidewalks to schools. I've had questions about that. People, well, why can't I get a sidewalk on my street? And the question is, is that a walking path or a walking area used? Because when you put in for the grant, it needs to be a route to the schools. So the ones that we've done thus far are, tend to be school routes.
So we've seen improvements on Morris, Morris Avenue and also over by-
Or down from North Hill, down from North Hill, some of the steps to go to the middle school.
And the West State Street, West Elementary School, steps behind there. So all of these things are a great help, so we appreciate it. And I think, I believe this works on a reimbursed basis on this grant.
A hundred.
So we're needing to appropriate the money and will be reimbursed for the costs.
And at one point, when we first started the safe routes to school grant application process, we did get a small grant to do a planning, you know, a full planning. So these have been the safe routes to school projects have been identified through a planning process, too, because we got a small grant and they had consultants come out and look at schools. And there's certain guidelines within the safe routes to school with how far distance from schools. The schools themselves put in requirements and asked for certain things and stuff. So this has been through a planning process, too, so.
The next finance/transportation item is the West State Bike Path Extension. And this is a, part of it is a land acquisition, but once again, it relates to our transportation around the city and through the West State Street Park. The City of Athens has been awarded a grant of a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars from the Clean Ohio Conservation Fund to buy the property owned by several persons in the area west of the railroad bridge that we have renovated in the past few years. So the purchase would allow the extension of the bike, of the bike path. There's a match required by the city. The grant covers seventy-five percent of the cost. The city would provide twenty-five percent match, which would be approximately six thousand dollars. And I'll label it cost share because not all of it needs to be cash. Some of it can be donated staff time from the Public Works Office.
I'll just correct you there.
Correct me.
Remember Nysley, sixty thousand, not six thousand.
Sixty thousand.
Yeah, sixty thousand, and a lot of that will be staff time, too, for coordinating the project and that kind of thing. I'm excited about this project because that's going to tie into the Armadale Road area and University Estates, and they'll have eventually a new bike trail and newly paved roads.
Well, it's supposed to go over to Moonville. I mean, it's extending that whole-
Someday.
You know, and someday you can go from Athens and to Washington, DC at some point, with all the projects that are in the works, so a long-term plan.
And this also is establishing the repairing corridor that will have educational pieces that has to be passive recreation.
That's great.
And that's a conservation area, too, which is kind of nice because it's not just, it's less urban and more remote. That'll be nice as that winds through that area there.
Be a big improvement.
Does passive recreation mean the city would not be able to have a water well in this property?
Correct.
I know there's plenty of other space along the river.
We asked that question.
And we have identified another tentative space up there. Next item is Public Works Issue One grant money, which we apply for, I think we try and apply for that just about every year, or every, every other year. And this is up to four hundred thousand dollars. And our next project will likely be the West Union Street repairs, which you may recall, we had originally hoped to have that done this year, but with OXFO going on and with the costs involved, we needed to delay for a while. So this gets the repairs on the agenda if it would be successfully considered approved.
For next year, basically.
For next year, so it would be 2014.
And that grant, I think you said it's kind of late this year, isn't it, due to September? We want to get it, get this all passed, you know, the authorizations to apply, so we're going to grant application.
Chris, a quick question. Can we discuss at some point the water lines, if there are the water lines through there? Is that something that will need to be repaired when this is done, or?
That's my understanding, is that one of the reasons why Public Works Director Stone wanted to delay the Union Street project along with the bridge work that's taking place in the detours this year was knowing that he can potentially pursue this grant and then coincide the projects together, is that correct?
Yeah, so it would be the waterline replacement and the street paving, and we're also looking at the corridor with the High University kind of starting to occupy that West Union Office Space Center to see some pedestrian improvements, maybe close one of those curb outlets, the curb cuts that shouldn't be there, as it were. And you can apply roadway, if you have a roadway infrastructure project, they score very high, and that trying to offset the cost of the waterline replacement, maybe applying more of the grant towards that, you know, will cover the resurfacing, so.
We have two or three miscellaneous items. One of them is a request from the court offices for council to appropriate thirty-seven hundred dollars. And this would be for the purchase of two new laptops. And this would be under their CCA grant, which is the Municipal Court Intensive Probation Program. They are four thousand dollars under on their budget in their grant funds. They have checked with their grant officer, who has actually encouraged them to apply so that they can use the unspent grant funds by June 30. And they haven't had new computers for five years, so the probation department has not purchased computers in over five years. So they thought that that would be a justifiable use of the remainder of their grant funds. Yes, Councilmember Butler.
Was that thirty-seven hundred for two laptops? Three?
Yes.
Yes.
Two?
Two.
Two. Seems rather excessive to me.
Expensive.
Oh, the math. I'm not sure what kind of laptops.
They've been shopping around, I think they have picked the ones that they really want. The fact is, they do have about forty thousand dollars unappropriated in that fund, but they're required to spend a certain amount of money on equipment, and that's where the four thousand comes in, that they're, and their grant runs from July 1st to June 30th, so they have until July 30th to spend that money.
What am I to say? I'm just counsel.
Well, I imagine they have some specialized software that they're including in that.
But thank you for the question.
And it's not our funds, it's court funds.
Not our money at all, not a bit of it.
We're just authorizing them to-
Rubber stamp.
Okay, but thank you for raising the question. The other item is that we have received four invoices from Strand, and this is the firm that has been offering us assistance with our wastewater treatment plant. And one of these invoices for fourteen thousand, nine hundred, eighty-five dollars and thirty-two cents is a prior year bill. So we'll need to move that one forward to have that approved by council. That was forwarded from the Auditor's Office today, or actually it came from Public Works over to the Auditor's Office, so we have had the review from the Auditor's Office on that.
We just got, there's actually four bills on there, but one of them is from last year, and as many of you might remember, the threshold for council approval of a prior year bill is three thousand dollars. So the total amount is about sixty-seven thousand dollars, which they have already applied for that drawdown for the money, but this payment still has to be made through our office, so we need approval for the fourteen thousand dollars for the prior year part of it. The other three are from this year, so they can get their PO in place and pay these bills.
They're probably going to blame it on me because we did some strong negotiating over their construction engineering fees and really didn't reach an agreement till sometime in December.
President Sands.
And I have a little miscellaneous also. Couple weeks ago, we passed a calendar along the way, and it turns out July 10th is one of those dates when everybody says they're going to be in town. I hope the plans haven't changed. The President, this is for our luncheon with President McDavis and his staff. I'm sure he'll bring some people with him. It's a conversation between President McDavis and the council, so we won't be inviting, if I were the mayor, I wouldn't be able to go, but I'm going to be a council member again. So this is July 10th at noon at Salam's. And we, we might like to have some idea of what you'd like to talk about, so just sometime in the next few weeks, either write them down or let me know what, maybe we can develop a theme and, so, but this is a discussion probably an hour, hour and a half. With lunch, council picks up the bill for council members and President and staff. Media people are invited, but they have to buy their own lunch, or find someone to buy it for you. And so I just want to let you know, July 10th, which is a Thursday, noon at Salam's, we'll be reminding you as we go along.
Is it still in town?
Wednesday.
July 10th is a Wednesday.
Oh, July, I'm in June.
It's a-
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. I haven't, I even have that written down here, I'm sorry. I was thinking Thursday. It's Wednesday, July 10th.
And are there any other miscellaneous items for finance and personnel?
All right, I guess that concludes our meeting this evening. Hopefully we'll see all of you next week at our June 3 regular session of council.